I'm gonna call the meeting to order, I'm gonna ask Councilman Cook to please lead us in prayer, and Councilman Castile to please lead us in the pledge.
Dear God, bless the work of our hands, the work of our minds, and the work of our hearts. May each day be an offering of worship to you. May your goodness flow through every deed. And may you keep us, shelter us, protect us, and feed us, that we may be blessed with the finances we need, and have the love and grace to give generously to all those that are in need. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We welcome you to the City Parish Council and Lafayette Public Utilities Authority Joint Meeting. We as your representatives in the Lafayette Consolidated Government welcome your involvement and encourage your participation. If you wish to address the council on any item on this agenda, please fill out a blue request to address the council form noting the agenda item number. The blue form is available to you in the far end, should be submitted to the council clerk, Ms. Veronica Williams seated to my left in the middle, prior to the call of the agenda item. It is important to fill out the blue form completely and note the agenda item number in which you wish to speak. If the card is not completely filled out or is not legible to the clerk, you will not be given the opportunity to speak. If you have materials you wish to submit to the council, please give those to Ms. Williams along with your blue form. In an effort to allow everyone an opportunity to be heard, the five-minute rule will be in effect. Speakers shall refrain from debating, personal attacks, and from making confrontational derogatory comments. I'm requesting that the first row to my left be used for media only. Lastly, food and drinks are not allowed in the auditorium, and all phones and electronic devices shall be silenced from this point forward. I am also requesting that anyone who approaches the council state their name and title for the official record. Meeting procedures are by resolution and not by Robert's Rules of Order. Documents including agendas, ordinances, resolutions, and minutes all related to this meeting and others are posted online at www.lafayette.la.gov, or referred to the web address on the top of the agenda. The council encourages your involvement and participation by volunteering for boards and commissions. If you are interested in finding out which board suits your interests, call 291-8800 or pick up a pamphlet at the door. I do have a few announcements. First, again, a reminder, this is a joint meeting of the council and LPUA, and this is to adopt the budget for the upcoming fiscal year. At times during the meeting, I will defer to LPUA Chair Mr. Bruce Kunk to preside over the LPUA matters. A meeting of the Lafayette Public Power Authority will follow this meeting immediately. Councilmember Nakken representing District 1 is running a little late due to job-related business, but he is en route, and is on his way, and should be here shortly. Also want to make you aware that the big screen in which we typically project all of the notices and announcements, and the vote count, and other things, is not operable tonight. The bulb for the projector needs to be replaced, and we didn't have money in the budget to do so, so we hopefully could replace it after tonight. I just want to thank the efforts of the council office, the finance management and staff, and of course, the administration for this process. We know that budget time for some people is challenging and difficult, but again, I want to just commend everybody's efforts and a job well done for a process that I have been honored to chair for the seventh time, and I tell you, it just seems to get better each time, so I'm looking forward to our process tonight. Got a really good budget before us, and hopefully we could finish it up. At this time, I'm gonna go to the Executive Mayor President for any comments or any report that he may have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Really just want to express my sincere appreciation to both the finance staff and all the long hours that they've put in, both in getting us to the point where we submit the budget to the council, and then also from that point to where we are today. And also want to thank the council, I know as quote-unquote "part-time employees", the demands that are placed on y'all for professional, personal, plus this civic duty that you've agreed to handle on behalf of all the constituents is way more time-consuming than a part-time job, and so my sincere appreciation for all of your efforts and the work that you do, and I've enjoyed, well, again, working with y'all through this budget process, and look forward to wrapping it up, though.
Thank you very much. Okay, it wasn't stated in my orders, and I apologize to the members, but if any council members would like to make a comment at this time before we actually get into the business of things, I want to give you an opportunity to do so at this time. Okay, seeing none, let's just kind of a few instructions. We're gonna start off by reviewing how the budget adoption generally works for those who still kind of getting used to this. Everything is gonna begin with a motion and a second to place the initial ordinance as it was presented to us on the floor. General amendments will be offered in global as we finalize those and make sure that they're clean and complete, and they'll be voted upon separately by the council and the LPUA. Staff is gonna read every general amendment for the purpose of the Opens Meeting Law, the viewing public, and everyone in attendance here today, so every general amendment will be read. As Finance Vice Chair, Councilman Castile is going to actually be the motioner on every item, and that's for the purpose of moving the meeting alone in the honor of sitting in that capacity, but this is whether he agrees or not. Him making that motion does not indicate that he is for or against, just as Vice Chair, he's gonna lead us in that capacity. Separate amendments will be voted upon individually, as you know. Each requiring a motion and a second. LUS budget items require a separate vote, of course, from the council by the LPUA as well, if necessary. Public comment will in fact be allowed on every single vote for general amendments and on each individual separate amendment. So the general amendments will be in global, and public comment is allowed at that time, like in a normal business, and on the separate amendments, for each separate amendment, public comment will be allowed for each one of those, if necessary. Finally, when all of the amendments have been addressed, both general and separate, a vote will be taken to adopt the ordinance as amended, meaning to adopt a budget, okay? So at this time, the first business that we're gonna do is I'm gonna open the floor to the administration first, and to finance if necessary. Are there any adjustments, auditions, or issues that needs to be addressed that we have not taken care of thus far? Do you all have anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, I'm gonna open the floor to council members, and this is following the list that you have before you, and that you've been having for quite some time now. For general and separate amendments, we're gonna now open the floor first addressing adjustments to existing general amendments, and we do have a couple of things that is going to happen. Some I know in advance, some we're gonna need to do just a tad bit of work on. We're gonna start off with the easiest first. As far as adjustments for separate amendments, item number 24, this was a separate general amendment, I'm sorry, that was made by Castile, and it affected a number of line items as it relates to funding. I have been informed and understand that this item will be pulled, this general amendment, and another may come later, but this general amendment will be pulled as it stated today. Is that correct, Mr. Castile?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so let the record reflect that general amendment number 24 has been pulled. Okay, also, adjustments to be made on general amendments. Adjustments to be made on general amendments. We're gonna first start off with item number six. This is amendment by Councilman Lewis. This was to create a new line item to construct a new pavilion in Dubois Park. Initially, he had a zero balance. The estimated cost is $300,000. He later identified funding, on August 31st, he identified funding in the amount of $200,000, which will be taken from the line item 4011-88000-365130. This is land infrastructure acquisition. This is the 401 sales tax capital improvement on the city, which appeared on page 277 in the budget document, reducing this line item from $1,369,656 to $1,169,656. And there was no objections. He is still in need of $100,000 to fulfill that. He has identified an additional $100,000 for item number six. This will come from the Enterprise System ISNT Capital on page 271, reducing the Enterprise System Fund by $100,000. Will there be any objections to that? Seeing none, so that general amendment has been adjusted, and it will be recognized as fully funded at $300,000. The next general amendment that is gonna need some adjustment, and Mr. Lewis, as you follow along, make sure that I'm referencing them correctly, okay? Okay, the next general amendment that is gonna need adjustment. Item number seven remains the same. It remains in the budget at this time with a zero balance, but it is identified as a future project, and that is for the resurfacing of the Martin Luther King Parking Lot. Item number eight, this was to create a line item for roof replacement and flashing work at Town Hall Health Unit. That item is gonna be identified as a needed capital item, and it's gonna remain at $0 to be addressed at a later time, okay? Line item number nine, this is to create a line item for speed humps in District 3. It had a zero balance. The estimated cost was $120,000 with funding to be identified at a later date, and there was no objection for that. He has looked at this further and has consulted with some individuals. That dollar amount is gonna actually need to be adjusted. He will fund speed humps in District 3 at the tune of $50,000, and that funding will also come from the Enterprise System ISNT Capital on page 271, reducing that by an additional $50,000. That'll be a new general amendment, number nine. Are there any objections? Okay, seeing none. The next issue is gonna be general amendment number 10. This was also by Lewis. This was to create a new line item for sidewalk repairs in District 3 with a zero balance with the estimated cost at $150,000 in funding. At this time, Mr. Lewis desires to remove this general amendment, so general amendment number 10 will be removed in its entirety at this time, and sidewalk repairs will be addressed through Public Works in another fashion. Is that correct, Mr. Lewis? Item number 11 remains the same. Okay, those are all of my noted adjustments as it relates to general amendments. Members of the council, are there any adjustments to general amendments that have not been identified? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna now move to separate amendments. Adjustments to existing separate amendments. There were two separate amendments that existed. The first being separate amendment number one. This was an amendment made by Kunk to reduce line item 1011131-50400-GROUP HELP INSURANCE by $165,937, and reduce line item 1011131-50415-GROUP LIFE INSURANCE by $4,500 on page 123, resulting in a zero balance in both line items. This was objected to by Bellard in relationship to the city marshal. It has now been determined that Mr. Kunk chooses to remove his amendment. Therefore, Mr. Bellard's objection will go moot, and this separate amendment will no longer exist. Is that correct, Mr. Kunk?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Bellard. Thank you. Separate amendment number two. This was an amendment being offered by Bellard for additional O&amp;M expenses. Overtime $30,000, promotional costs $8,431, and retirement Medicare tax of $435. This was also for the city marshal's office. The funding source in the total amount of $38,866 from a contribution of reimbursement from the city marshal and the City General Fund 101. This referenced amendment took place on August 31st, 2017. Number two provided by finance, and Kunk objected to that. It is now brought to my attention that Mr. Bellard chooses to remove his separate amendment. Therefore, Mr. Kunk, objection will go moot, and this separate amendment will no longer exist. Mr. Bellard, is that correct? Thank you, Mr. Kunk. Thank you. So this actually disposes of all separate amendments as of this time. Therefore, we will only be addressing general amendments before going into the actual budget adoption. Now, do not feel obligated to do anything, but at this time, I'm gonna open the floor for, are there any new amendments to bring forth at this time? Mr. Nakken? Oh, I'm sorry, actually, I apologize, Kevin. The names in the system wasn't adjusted for the current seating, so it is under normal. So I apologize for calling upon you. Actually, it's Mr. Castile. That's all the money should go. Okay, yeah, this time, I'd like to replace amendment number 24 with a new amendment according to the schedule that was given to the clerk, and Jeremy can read it off whenever is appropriate. Right, he's gonna reference those in the reading of the general amendments at that time. But Mr. Castile offers that amendment. As you know, he had an amendment on the floor which was not objected to amendment 24, which he completely withdrew. And this is to just keep it really clean rather than trying to go in and change things. And now he's offering the new amendment of the schedule that was provided. And for the record, Jeremy will read all of those into the record at the appropriate time. But for the purpose of what is in front of you, are there any objections to Mr. Castile's amendment? Mr. Bellard?
No, just the only thing I'd like to comment on is that, and Mr. Castile had told me we will do, or he will do this, is to review all this with the current director to see what's working and what's not, along with the administration. And it's been told to me that that will be done, so I just wanted to put that on the record. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. That is correct. That's correct. Okay, so there was no objection to that general amendment, so we have a new general amendment number 24, which will be read at the appropriate time. Okay, so now we're ready to move forward to adoption. Y'all doing real good. Doing good. Again, this is a public hearing, and blue sheets are available. Anyone wishing to address the council, the five-minute rule does remain in effect. Jeremy, can you please read item number five?
Ordinance 153, 2017. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council and the Lafayette Public Utilities Authority adopting and operating a five-year capital improvement budget of revenues and expenditures for the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government for the fiscal year beginning November 1st, 2017, and ending October 31st, 2018.
Motion is being made by Castile, that is going to be second by Mr. Kunk. Mr. Kunk, please get a motion on the floor from LPUA.
Need a motion from the LPUA, moved by Ms. Cook, second by Mr. Lewis.
Mr. Lewis.
Mr. Lewis.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the motion's on the floor for the adoption of the budget. We're gonna now go back to general amendments, and I'm gonna ask there, as you could see, there's 27 of those general amendments, so we're gonna ask that members be considered of Jeremy's reading at this time. And we're gonna ask Jeremy to read each general amendment for public purpose, please.
General Amendment 1. Castile, on page 225, reduce line item contractual services to $748,000, a decrease of $100,000, LUS. General Amendment number 2, Bellard. On page 126, reduce line item promotion costs by $1,080 due to the state of Louisiana suspension in the performance adjustment that was scheduled for October 1st, 2017, and granting a 2% general increase effective January 1st, 2018. The excess promotion cost reduction in the amount of $1,080 is being moved to line item printing and binding for the registrar of voters, Register of Voters. General Amendment 3, Castile. Amend animal control shelter revenue fees due to changes in operation, also to reduce the subsidy from the Combined Public Health Fund 269 Animal Control. General Amendment 4, Kunk. Page 142, change the title of line item Reserve Loan to Communications to Reserve Loans Receivable Finance. General Amendment number 5, Abear. Create a new line item to add street lighting along West Marshall Avenue from Settlers Trace Boulevard to Arabella Boulevard with a zero balance. The estimated cost is $180,000. Abear has identified funding in the amount of $180,000, which will be taken from line item 54 South City Parkway Extension on page 258, Public Works. New general amendment number 6. Lewis, create a new line item to construct a new pavilion in Dubois Park with a zero balance. The estimated cost is $300,000. Lewis has identified funding in the amount of $200,000, which will be taken from line item Land Infrastructure Acquisitions 401 Sales Tax Capital Improvement City on page 277, reducing this line item from $1,369,656 to $1,169,656, and an additional $100,000 from page 271 Enterprise Systems ISNT Public Works. General Amendment number 7. Lewis, create a new line item to resurface the Martin Luther King Recreation Center Parking Lot, front and back, with a zero balance. The estimated cost is $270,000 with funding to be identified at a later date. General Amendment number 8. Lewis, create a new line item for roof replacement and flashing work at the Town Hall and Health Unit Building of the Clifton Schneer Center with a zero balance. The estimated cost is $300,000 with funding to be identified at a later date, Public Works. New general amendment 9. Lewis, create a new line item for speed humps in District 3 with a zero Three with a zero balance. The estimated cost is $50,000. Lewis has identified funding in the amount of $50,000, which will be taken from Enterprise Systems ISNT Capital on page 271. General Amendment Number Eleven, Lewis, create a new line item to connect the driveway of Fire Station Number Three to Benoit Faulkow Road. The estimated cost is $59,000 with funding to be identified at a later date, Public Works. General Amendment Number Twelve, Kunk, create a new line item for Shaguah Park Improvement Walking Path with a zero balance. The estimated cost is $150,000. Kunk has identified funds in the amount of $150,000, which will be taken from the balance of line item 82 Sidewalk Stullis Ambassador Cafrey Omega on page 259, Public Works. General Amendment Number Thirteen, Kunk, create a new line item for Oaklawn Park Improvement Walking Path with a zero balance. The estimated cost is $75,000. Kunk has identified funding in the amount of $75,000, which will be taken from the balances of line item 82 Sidewalk Stullis Ambassador Cafrey Omega on page 259, in the amount of $50,000, and light item three Ambassador Cafrey VA Traffic Signal Construction on page 257, in the amount of $25,000, Public Works. General Amendment Number Fourteen, Cook, create a new line item for tennis facilities at Thomas Park Recreation Center, including an office, locker room, and visitors' restrooms with a zero balance. The estimated cost is $525,000 with funding to be identified at a later date, Public Works. General Amendment Number Fifteen, Cook, create a new line item for resurfacing and lighting for four pickleball courts at Como Recreation Center with a zero balance. The estimated cost is $175,000. Cook has identified funding in the amount of $175,000, which will be taken from the balance of line item seven Bertrand Streetscape on page 257. General Amendment Number Sixteen, Cook, on page 188, increase line item temporary employees from $43,000 to $58,000 for four directors for the therapeutic recreation program. The estimated cost is $15,000. Cook has identified funding in the amount of $15,000, which will be taken from the City General Fund 101 Parks and Recreation. General Amendment Number Seventeen, Nakane, to reduce reimbursement amounts of $25,000 from the parish to the city for the city fire truck and reappropriate equally between Broussard Volunteer Fire Department, Carron Crow Volunteer Fire Department, Scott Volunteer Fire Department, and Youngsville Volunteer Fire Department. Also to reduce the revenue in the City General Fund associated with the parish reimbursement for the city fire truck. Milton, Judice, and Dusson will remain as originally funded, fire. General Amendment Number Eighteen, Nakane, reduce line item contractual services, public education on page 153 from $50,000 to $0. Create line item training of personnel in the 3100 Police Administration section of page 153 and appropriate $50,000 within police. General Amendment Nineteen, Kunk, additional operating and maintenance expenses for the alcohol and noise control due to the move from Lafayette Police Department to the Development and Planning Department. The funding source is from a reduction of the Lafayette Police Department line item and use of fund balance in the City General Fund 101, and also adjusting city parish allocations accordingly, police. General Amendment Number Twenty, Cook, change the title of line item contractual services, Central Parks on page 166 to contractual services Downtown Parks, and change the title of revenue account, Central Parks Rentals on page 74 to Downtown Parks Rentals, Public Works. General Amendment Twenty One, Castile, increase publication and recordation appropriation due to the clerk of courts increase in recording fees effective August 1st, 2017, Public Works. General Amendment Number Twenty Two, Kunk, amend smart meter account to reduce subsidy from City General Fund 101, Public Works. General Amendment Number Twenty Three, Castile, amend drainage maintenance fund 261 to change activity description from a replacement vehicle to a new vehicle on page 275, Public Works. New General Amendment Number Twenty Four, Castile, is removing promotional costs related only to certain divisions as follows. 2061251, all. 2651255, all. 5323750, all. 5323790, all. 5323795, all. 4015134, all. 5505172, all. 2615222, all. 7025163, all. 1015911, all. 5027020, all. 5027032, all. 5027033, all. 5027040, all. 5027060, all. 5027082, all. 5027084, all. 5027086, all. 2639200, all. General Amendment Number Twenty Five, Cook, on page 188, increase line item temporary employees from $288,896 to $310,896 for seven directors for the summer enrichment recreation program. The estimated cost is $22,000, which is to be taken from the City General Fund 101, Parks. General Amendment Number Twenty Six, Bellard, Lafayette Animal Control Center be renamed to the Lafayette Animal Care Center for all references throughout the budget referring to its revenues and expenditures, animal control. General Amendment Twenty Seven, Nakane, appropriate funding for a new line item entitled Replace Auditorium Audio Recorder in the amount of $8,000, which is to be taken from line item 54, South City Parkway Extension on page 258, council.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion in a second from the council to accept these general amendments in global. Motion by Castile, seconded by Kunk. Mr. Kunk?
Need a motion from the LPUA, moved by Ms. Cook, seconded by Ms. Abear.
This time, the floor is open to members for discussion on any of these general amendments. There is none, are there any green cards on any of these general amendments? First, we're going to call for the vote on the general amendments by the council, please.
District One?
Yes.
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
District Six?
Yes.
District Seven?
Yes.
District Eight?
Yes.
District Nine? Motion is approved by council.
Call for the vote from the LPUA. This will be a voice vote only.
District Three? District Four?
Yes.
District Six?
Yes.
District Seven?
Yes.
District Eight?
Yes.
Motion is approved by LPUA.
Okay, since the issues of separate amendments was addressed at the beginning of the meeting, we actually have no separate amendments to take up individually at this time. That completely removes that. At this time, we're going to move to the actual adoption of the ordinance now that it has been amended. There has been a question, so let me indicate that this budget goes into effect on November the 1st of this year. Our fiscal year begins November the 1st. Someone raised the question. It was brought to our attention, so we wanted to note that, although it was mentioned in the reading by Jeremy of the ordinance itself. So at this time, we're going to call for any green cards as it relates to the budget ordinance itself. There are none. Thank you very much. So we're going to call for the vote to adopt the ordinance as it has been amended first by, first by the council.
District Two?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
District Six?
Yes.
District Seven?
Yes.
District Eight?
Yes.
District Nine? District One? Motion to adopt as amended is approved by council.
All four vote from LPUA, please.
District Four?
Yes.
District Six?
Yes.
District Seven?
Yes.
District Eight? District Three? Motion to adopt as amended is approved by LPUA.
Mr. President, congratulations. This meeting is adjourned. We're going to now call to order the special meeting of the LPPA. This is a public hearing and blue sheets are available for anyone wishing to address the LPPA. The five-minute rule does apply. Jeremy, could you please read item number two?
Ordinance LPPA 236, an ordinance of the Lafayette Public Power Authority, adopting an operating and capital budget of revenues and expenditures for the Lafayette, Louisiana Public Power Authority for the fiscal year beginning November 1st, 2017, and ending October 31st, 2018.
Motion by Castile, seconded by Kunk. Council discussion, LPPA discussion? There is none, any blue cards on this matter? Please call the vote.
District One?
Yes.
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five? District Six?
Yes.
District Seven?
Yes.
District Eight?
Yes.
District Nine? Motion to adopt is approved.
Thank you, meeting adjourned.